If I remembered my own water. Look at me.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the July 21st Post Falls City Council Meeting. Shannon, please note that all council members are in attendance. Before we start, I think I would like to say this is Ms. Stephanie in the back's first meeting running solo as Kit Hofer retired last week, this week, last week?
Last week.
Last week, after many, many years with the city, so we're in good hands with Stephanie, so Stephanie, welcome to the big chair. We do have a few announcements tonight. The city will be starting its summer concert series tomorrow night featuring Bill Bosley. It will start at 6:00 PM on the City Hall Plaza and will run every Wednesday for the next four weeks. The concert is free, but you must pre-register through the city's recreation website so that we can ensure safe distancing of our audience. The concert series is made possible through the great support of TDS Fiber. We want to thank TDS Fiber for their sponsorship with this concert series. The city council and I will be attending the land use training next Wednesday, July 29th at 5:30 PM at the Trailhead Event Center at Camellan Park. The public is invited to attend. And then I want to take a moment and give kudos to a member of our packs, our park staff, Ivan, who assisted a group of individuals over the weekend. Ivan was called over to help with a bee issue at one of our gazebo's, gazebo's, and although Ivan was stung during the process, he persisted and got the group moved, removed the bees' nests and set up traps to encourage the bees to stay away from the area. We received a message stating that he did a fantastic job and we need more young Ivans in the workforce. So it's always great to hear good things about our employees and Dave, please pass our thank you on to Ivan and ask if he makes house calls. Also would like to announce that the Association of Idaho Cities Counselor Jerry Mason received the Ken Harwood Award for Exceptional Service to Idaho and its Communities. And as you know, Jerry was a city attorney here for many, many years and I think Mr. Warren might agree, he was probably the dean of municipal attorneys. As good as Warren is, he's right up there with Jerry, but Jerry led us through many, many years of events and growth. AIC honored, the AIC honored AIC Council Jerry Mason with the Ken Harwood Award on June 11th during the AIC Virtual Annual Conference. The Ken Harwood Award was established by AIC to recognize exceptional contributions benefiting the state of Idaho and its communities. Jerry Mason serves as AIC's legal counsel and his board counsel for ICRAP. His work for, with AIC involves training, technical assistance and advocacy in the subject areas of planning, zoning, annexation, procurement, open meetings, public records, ethics, personnel and liability. With his longtime law partner Nancy Strickland, the Mason-Strickland Firm provided legal counsels to cities in North Idaho, including Post Falls, for over a decade. Jerry has made a significant impact on Post Falls and who we are today. One of Jerry's greatest highlights in advocating for cities was the Plummer versus Fruitland case, which was reheard before the Idaho Supreme Court. And Jerry's argument and amicus brief was instrumental in convincing the court to unanimously overturn their earlier decision, rule in favor of the city's power to have an exclusive solid waste collection franchise. It was an impressive and well-deserved result of Jerry's hard work. He has been, he has been an articulate and persuasive advocate for fair procedures to govern decision-making and his vision for procedural fairness is enshrined in state laws governing local government, procurement, land use and annexation. Jerry's 45 years of experience in local government provides him with a valuable and unequaled perspective, said Kelly Packer, who's the AIC Executive Director. The AIC Board and staff have the greatest appreciation for Jerry's dedicated service. And I had the opportunity to serve on AIC's Board for the past two years and I think Jerry was planning on retiring before I got there and I think he might still be there trying to train, find and/or train new people, so he's quite a gentleman and it's an award that was very well deserved. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We do tonight. Item L needs to be removed from the consent calendar.
I would move to remove item L from the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
And that item will come back to the next meeting.
And I should have mentioned at the start, we do have three public hearings tonight, so if anyone does wish to testify, there's forms in the back, you can fill them out and drop them off with Shannon. Shelley, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes, July 7th, 2020, City Council Meeting. Item B is payables, June 30th through July 13th, 2020. Item C is acceptance of land connected to Telomore Park. Item D is annexation agreement, master development agreement, grant of right-of-way, grant of easement for Quiet Ridge Annexation. Item E is master development agreement for Quiet Ridge Subdivision. Item F is frontage improvement waiver request, 392 South Woodside Avenue. Item G is vintage annexation, reasoned decision. Item H is Simon Zone Change Reasoned Decision. Item I is Renly Estate Subdivision Master Development Agreement. Item J is annexation agreement, grant of right-of-way and grant of easement for vintage acquisition. And item K is annexation agreement, grant of right-of-way and grant of easement for Dayland Annexation. Item M is supplemental geotechnical services at Black Bay Park. And item N is Rory Springs Subdivision Platt Application.
Any questions on the consent calendar? I'd move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. We're now into the public hearings and the first public hearing tonight is land application annexation. Open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, before we start that, would note that we need to do a declaration of conflicts, ex parte contacts.
Oops, sorry. Thank you for catching me. Are there any declarations of conflicts, ex parte contacts and site visits? No, seeing none. Thank you for keeping me on top of which I wasn't. Mr. Manley.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm and members of City Council. John Manley, Planning Manager here at the city of Post Falls, introducing the land application annexation case file ANNX 2020. This is a joint application between the city of Post Falls and the school district, requesting approval for 717 acres into the city of Post Falls with the public reserve zoning designation. So the public reserve zoning designation is there for specific reasons and it's to accommodate existing and future public uses, government, public utility, educational, recreational, cultural, water reuse, agriculture, environmental, and it doesn't allow privately owned development. Some of the concerns you've seen in the staff report was we might see additional housing tracks or development with the public reserve zone, that wouldn't happen with this. It's a reason why it exists. The PR zone needs to be consistent with the conference of plan and it needs to be a minimum of at least 20 acres. Here's the project location here. The total annexation area is the red hashed area and you see some transparent green and blue over some of it. The blue area on the west side, that is intended to be the future school site, which the city of Post Falls owned at one time. And there was a land swap that you've seen in your packet and what the land that we swapped was the 80 acres you see in green there. And so it still allowed us to have some contiguous land on other land app properties and provide a site for potential school development. Here's that exhibit that was in the staff report. There was some confusion in the planning and zoning and I just wanted to clarify with the actual land use. This right here, the font's a little small to be seen here, but this is how you can see in the county's records, the city does own this now, that piece that the parks once owned. And then the Satchwell piece is to the south. So there was just a little bit of concern that there was some overlap, but there is no overlap with this proposal. This is a school district and they're emailed to the city saying that they're on board with the annexation. Land use currently is large land, ag. There's no significant topography or vegetation issues with it. Water provider, most of the site would be if it was to ever, you've seen in the staff report, there's really no intent to ever provide water to it, but would be provided by East Green Acres on most of it. The areas outside would be resolved at a later date if anything was to occur, if sewer was ever to be provided, which you've seen in staff report, not the intent. It's for water reclamation, for land app. It would sewer be provided by the city of Post Falls. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the record and recommended the PR zone based off of six zoning criteria. Being consistent with the future land use map, goals and policies, street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses and community plans. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended based being consistent on all those. Additionally, you've got the commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically along streets with higher road classifications. The next one deals with commercial and lower-density residential zoning. This is public reserve, so really aren't very applicable. Similarly with the sixth one being industrial zoning, isn't really applicable with their request. So really it was those first three that they based their recommendation of the public reserve zoning to you tonight. Do you have any questions for me on zoning?
Questions to John? Steve, go ahead.
Well, really not on zoning, John, but if the school district develops, East Green Acres would be providing the water to the school district then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, John, I'm just curious, why are we doing this now? We've owned this property for a long time and, you know, we don't have any plans to necessarily do anything out there right away. Why are we annexing it now?
From communication with other staff, it begins the process, it reduces, it eliminates one of the eventual hurdles that'll already be in the city. So there's some advantages there to plan for land application with it already being in the city. It gives us the ability to potentially get right-of-way that we may need, so there's a benefit there. Additionally, if for some reason there were some activities out there, it would allow more of a police presence if needed out there on that property. So I think that's the big main reasons at this point in time that I know of.
I guess my biggest concern is it creates a very large pocket within the city. And I brought this up before, but I'm curious, you know, again, with our policy being that future annexations need to be contiguous to city, it allows for some maybe, I don't know, misinformation that people will want to annex a piece of property that touches that new piece, but doesn't meet some of the other criteria? Is that something you guys are going to be able to handle in your department?
We get a lot of questions on, is this available to be annexed? We'll be able to answer, yeah, you're contiguous, but then it'll dovetail into other conversations like utilities. It more likely wouldn't have water or sewer in close proximity to where they desire to annex. So then it becomes cost prohibitive for them to annex into the city because they'll have to extend services that are quite an extensive length. So costs will probably control most of those requests. It'll have to more likely be adjacent to existing city boundaries along Prairie for it to financially make any sense. We've already met with some groups up in this area that was looking at some development and that's where the conversations end up failing is not having sewer in close proximity and then we have the sewer master plan that they have to adhere to for where they're draining to with basin and whatnot. So I see your point, it does, you know, off the cuff, look a little kind of haywire poking out to the east, but it does bring us, I believe, more consistent with some of our master planning being in the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, John? That's going to be the...
I have more. I was going to go over a couple or more annexation policies. So that would be why the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the PR zone based off zoning. Wasn't going to go over every annexation policy, there's 11 of them, but I was going to go over the main ones and we kind of just touched on it. The request should be consistent with the other, with the comp plan and the master plans, facility plans. And that's partly why there's this request, is to start beginning that process being consistent with the water and wastewater plants. Timing should be coordinated for orderly development for public systems. Both policies addressed in the comp plan and addressed in the master plan of water, sewer, transportation, parks, emergency services. So I kind of highlighted here, you know, it's a planned land application site, discussed it. Got the school site, it provides an opportunity for them and increases the public worth to provide oversight of any use too. So there's some benefits for bringing that in and meeting policy point number four. Here's the agencies as routed, police department commented they remain neutral on the proposal and once again, the school district did comment. And that wraps up the staff report for this.
Any other questions? Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Anybody wishing to testify?
We had one via email. I'm going to say that this is neutral. This is Jordan Crocker at 8918 North Mountshire Road. His question is, while I am for the natural resources like the fields north of town and the land west of Camellan Park for water reclamation, I would like to know if an environmental impact study has been done to determine what impart pumping heavy sulfates onto the ground will have, especially what impact it would have on the East Green Acres Water District.
If I respond to that, John?
Yeah, I spoke with Craig a little bit about this today and Warren. This right here, we're just getting an annexation and zoning at this point in time. Any sort of work or development towards doing any sort of land application requires other permitting processes and also more additional environmental analysis in coordination with DEQ. So the city couldn't just go out there and start doing something without doing a lot more studies. And so we all realize the concern and so does DEQ and so does the city. So there'll be future analysis and more stuff coming to you.
Thank you. That was the only testimony?
Yes.
Close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to act?
I would move to approve the land application annexation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next public hearing tonight is the community forest annexation. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Manley.
Yes, so the community forest annexation ANNX 3, 2020. The city is requesting annexation for 437 acres into the city with the public reserve zoning designation that we recently discussed. Same reasons as the previous, same purpose statements and everything that's the same. The location though is different, being that this is south of the river and west of Spokane Street. Camellan Park is at this location, so it's adjacent and just west of Camellan Park. And Corbin Park is at this location, so gives you an idea of where that acreage is. Currently it's being used for recreational purposes and there is planned land application for the site. A lot of tree acreage out there. If the city ever wanted to provide water services, we would be the provider. But you saw in the staff report that there's no plan for water or sewer on this site at this time. Zone change criteria, much similar to the previous public hearing, being consistent with the future land use map, the goals and policies and considerations for street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, community plans, geographic natural features. Kind of the same reasons, this is a planned facility for land application. It's been a part of the, so master planning in Post Falls and so the proposal is consistent with those as well as the adjacent zoning. There's no issues with that and no complications with street classifications nearby. Same with the last presentation, the proposals for public reserve, it really, these don't really apply to it as much because being commercial or residential or industrial, there's no desire to do any of that there. Going to the annexation policies, must comply with city's conference of plan. I mentioned that the proposal is consistent with the other master plans that we have adopted and would help meet those needs. The fourth one, I've mentioned this in the last one, but is orderly development and policies addressed in the conference of plan and master plans, water master plans, transportation. So portions would be for land application. There is also some other elements like recreational opportunities at this site that you don't have in other places. Street classifications can serve it and it allows more of an efficient police presence on the site. We do get numerous people hiking out there and adventuring in different locations out there and different activities. In the number 11 here, should provide assurance for logical extension of park system that is usable open space to benefit the overall community as well as being connected and adjoining neighborhoods throughout interconnected pedestrian networks. This is an unusual one because it is south of the river. It's tough to make this interconnected with the subdivisions in Post Falls. But it is low, close proximity to the city center. It is adjacent to the Camellan Park and there is plans to improve some connectivity to this community forest area, to other areas of Post Falls. And it does add a regional draw to Post Falls, being the size and scope that it is. So it would meet this policy. Agencies that were routed is as you see here. VISA provided comments, you may have seen that in the staff report with some of their concerns. Staff wanted to just bring forward like we did at the Planning and Zoning Commission that a lot of their concerns are being continually discussed. They will be continually going forward, administration. This is an ongoing discussions and I think through talking to Warren, this may not be the best vehicle to address it at this time, but maybe through some other agreements. Comments and questions you have for this, for me at this time?
Questions to John, listen.
John, I had one question and it goes back to the planning and zoning meeting that you held and the minutes that are in our packet. On page 199, there's a statement, Mr. Stephenson asked, "This is just an annexation and will be a park," correct? You respond to, "The intent is to have one large land holding and to subdivide for houses." Is that just a misstatement?
That must be a misstatement because there, we had some comments from the public that was concerned that it would be subdivided for houses, but yet it...
You go on to say, "The zone will not allow for privately developed houses," so I was confused by that.
Yeah, there's no public housing, there's no private housing, there's no subdivision being planned out there. This is like as the initial part, it's a large land holding reserved for land application and recreation, that's the intent.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
I would like to mention before everything is, in the staff report, it was enlightened to me that the minutes for the community forest was in with the land app and the land app minutes were in the other. So I hope that didn't bring any too much confusion, we were able to muddle through that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Close the public hearing. On this one, you know, on both of these annexations tonight, we've seen so much land being developed in housing and we're seeing all this open space go away and I know the city has intention of using this for land application down the road, but personally, I like seeing open space preserved. And I think both of these annexation helps us accomplish that and keep it as open space, especially the community forest with the trails and stuff that they have down there. I think that they've done a tremendous, the city and all the volunteers have done a tremendous job down there, so I think that's a big win for the city. Counsel, any comments or...
My only other comment was in the reason for my question for John, there was a lot, it just seemed like there's some concern that people still think we're going to somehow develop this, that there's going to be, end up being houses out there and I just want it on the record
Appreciate it.
again, that this is not the intent for this annexation.
Entertained a motion?
I would move to approve the community forest annexation file number ANNX-0003-2020.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Motion passes, thank you. And our third and final public hearing tonight is Tollner's Easement Vacation. Open that public hearing and Mr. Manley.
Yes, so Tollner's Vacation. The case file for this is BACA 3, 2020. The owner and the applicant of this is Darren Tollner. I don't know if he's here.
Yes, sir.
If he is, haven't had a chance to meet you, so hey. So yeah, they're requesting to vacate portions of 393 Forest Glen. You can see here highlighted the area of this easement that encompasses this property. Think they desire a development of some outbuilding that would, this is kind of encumbering. Staff reviewed this and we didn't see any issues with what was being proposed. There's no known utilities and we didn't receive any comment from a utility provider regarding this matter. Thinking of staff report, you saw that in the past, that's kind of the method they went when they plotted lots, they just saved their bacon, plotted easements around all edges and said, "Well, if we ever need them, we got a space for it." So now we have a different method. We usually create easements where we know we're going to have utilities and we preserve corridors for known areas rather than having reserved spaces. Agencies routed is as you've seen here, is the list. This is a fairly short presentation on my part, so...
John, I have a question for you. So we've got one applicant asking for a vacation. Does this property to be vacated border any other properties? In the past, if we vacate an area, doesn't it tend to go to the adjoining property owners?
No, this one here would be, it's not like a right-of-way vacation where you split it 50/50. This is 100% on their property. So all this goes to them.
Thank you.
And then each one of these neighbors could independently have their own future application as well.
Good. Any other questions, John? Please stay forward. Did the applicant wish to speak or... Name for the record, please.
I'm Darren Tollner, owner of property 393 Forest Glen Boulevard, Post Falls. I am applying for the easement in favor of the easement. Basically, as John said, I just want to vacate this easement to get my, I'm building a 30 by 50 shop, just to build it within the standard setbacks of R1 district, which is five feet on the side, 10 feet on the back, just for ease of access, better curb appeal and get some cars off the street, out of view. So basically, like I say, just keep it simple and short, just to better utilize the property, not force it into the backyard, have a little bit more room for my kids to run and play, so.
Perfect. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
And I'm not, I don't believe you're going to rebut anything that was said as the applicant, so with that, I will, is that correct? You're not going to rebut anything, correct? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to act?
Just move to approve Tollner's easement vacation?
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda tonight is unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolutions and we've got a slew. The first ordinance is the Quiet Ridge Annexation.
Move to place the ordinance, Quiet Ridge Annexation, on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 4.87 acres, located in the east quarter of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, in the west half of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter, all lying in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section 28 Township 51 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County, Idaho, and zoning the annexed property, single-family residential R1, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance, Quiet Ridge Annexation, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion?
Which quarter was that?
Clarify, please.
Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the Dayland Annexation?
Move to place the ordinance Dayland Annexation on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 5.05 acres located in the southeast quarter of section 31 Township 51 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County Idaho, and zoning the annexed property, Community Commercial Services CCS, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the Dayland Annexation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately 9.77 acres located in the southwest quarter of section 25 Township 51 North, Range 5 West Boise Meridian, Cootney County Idaho, and zoning the annexed property, single family residential R1, providing for the amendment of the official zoning map, providing for an effective date hereof.
Move to approve the ordinance Vintage Acquisition Annexation to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Last ordinance is the Simon Zone Change.
Move to place the ordinance Simon Zone Change on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you, Karen. Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mr. Wilson.
An ordinance of the City of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the land described in section one of this ordinance from single family residential R1 to medium density multifamily residential R2, providing for an amendment of the official zoning map to reflect this change, providing that all prior zones applicable to lands described in section one are hereby superseded and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance Simon Zone Change to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, and we do have one resolution tonight.
Move to approve the resolution fiscal year 2021 budget.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, Linda. Next item up is new business. Tonight we have a topic on increasing Planning and Zoning Commission membership. And Mr. Wilson, why don't you bring us along and then I'll add my comment.
Sure. So tonight we have an ordinance for you. We typically bring ordinances back because this, this is one where we're hoping to get timely action on so we can move forward with an appointment of a planning commission member. Currently, our code allows for seven planning commission members. We're in the third quarter of a game of rewriting our impact fees and, and our impact fee advisory committee is also our planning commission. We have one member of our planning commission whose term was up earlier this year, but he agreed to stay on the commission until we wrapped up that project because we didn't want to change up the membership midstream. However, we do have a new person we'd like to get appointed and get them up to speed. We've got training coming up next week, so we thought we would raise the number up to eight while we're wrapping up this project. That way we could get the new member appointed, get through the training. Once we have the impact fee project completed and, and the retiring member steps down, we'd probably come back with another ordinance to go back to seven. So this is sort of a stopgap to get us down the road and keep moving forward on the impact fee project so we don't have to essentially create a new panel and start over on that panel. Happy to answer any questions.
The reason I asked Warren to take a look at this is Mark Latham, who's a commission member and being he's in the building industry as an architect, the requirements are that so many members of the impact fee committee be, is it part of the?
In the industry.
In the industry. So the gentleman that I'm hoping to bring forward has applied and has agreed to serve, he's not in that industry. So if we, Mark has not been coming to meetings anyway and, but he has agreed to stay on throughout the impact fee. So we're an even number, which could cause a potential four-four vote, but he's not at the meetings anyway. So this is just to get us, as Warren said, through the impact fee adoption and then we would reduce it back down. Mark can retire. He served many, many years on the commission. Appreciate his willingness to stay on through the impact fees, but I don't, I don't view this as being an issue on a tie vote in the immediate future. So that's why I asked Warren to take a look at, structure it this way so we could get it moving forward.
So you just need a motion?
Yeah.
It would just be to adopt the ordinance. That's the next action item.
So any other questions before we jump into the ordinance? Is everybody all right?
Yep.
Move to place the ordinance to increase the Planning and Zoning Commission membership to eight on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Shannon, could you reach out to Mr. Schlotower and let him know?
I'm going to let him do his reading for.
Oh, I'm sorry, Warren. Go ahead. I was so excited.
Probably halfway there.
Mr. Wilson?
All right. So an ordinance amending the municipal code of the City of Post Falls, Cootney County, Idaho, amending section 2.12.010 to set the number of planning commission members at eight, requiring a quorum of four members to conduct business, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, providing an effective date.
Move to approve the ordinance to increase the Planning and Zoning Commission membership to eight, to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and let it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm appropriately chastised, but I was trying to move things forward. Now Shannon, would you please reach out and I'll see Mr. Davis, the chairman tomorrow, and I'll let him know as well.
Yes.
Thanks, thanks, Warren. Next item up is the administrative staff reports. Mr. Fair, Black Bay Depot.
Mr. Mayor, council members, seems like well since I've been up here, but tonight is a culmination of a project that started back in 2017. And we started looking at the purchase of the senior thrift store building and converting it over into a recreation facility that's named the Black Bay Depot. When we started the process, we were really looking at that need for indoor recreation space. We needed two large activity rooms. We wanted to get the public out of the rain. Currently, we're using the treehouse and the trailhead. Neither were set up for people to come in and congregate unless they're right in that activity. We heard from the public that they wanted a viewing space and they really wanted to be able to access the rooms without, or bathrooms, without going through the room in the class. So that was critical things, picking up that property to take care of the island that it was creating. Partway through, as we went into the design of it, we realized that in a few years, we'd be doing some work on the outside of the building. So instead of putting stuff in, then turning it out in a few years, it made sense just to move that timetable forward. That included better ADA access, access to the Centennial Trail. We put in a playground, a multi-use synthetic turf, and the idea behind that was to try it out before we did any construction on a large scale sports complex, just to see how it worked and how it was taken. Quick timeline, the city agreed to purchase it and we did that in April of 2018. The design work took a little bit longer, took eight months. And the reason for that is when we, we set a budget for that, we went to designers, they were all fairly busy. One said, "Well, we can do it, but this is what it's going to cost." And we said, "We can't afford that." So we were able to fit this into their projects as they went along. We cut some things back that we didn't get designed and did a design build on some of those. Went through, got a review of the permitting, started construction spring of last year and finished it spring of this year. What we started out with was the thrift store. It was a 5,500 square foot building, a pole barn on just shy of an acre of land. One of the big things is it was zone commercial, but it was for retail use and we were changing it to assembly use. So there were some changes in building requirements that we had to go through. Just bring back memory of what we started out with. That was behind the building. That was used by the New Vision High School. Had to do a lot of construction, couldn't find anything of the inside of the building, but it was pretty basic, pretty dilapidated. To kind of give you a sense of the extent of some of the construction, a lot of site work, a lot of field work. As they, had to get everything prepped as they built it. We had a lot of subcontractors working with us. They did extra time. If you look at the tile going down, he's actually got it tarp'd off and heated. That was back in November. It was pretty cold, so they went the extra mile for us. Staff did a lot of the interior work, cleaning up. Maybe a better comparison is what the site looked like. Tried to compare that. You can see the asphalt all broken up. Backside or side, that's the swale, that's addressing all the water that was running off of the senior center. Backside again. So I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. A number of you were able to come see the building. The big, the big issue in there that we had from councils ask us, what did it cost us? Purchase price was 275,000. At that time, the market value, we were told was at the 425 to 450. We put in 13,000 in design, another 314,000 on the improvements of the building for 602,000. Exterior improvements were 559,000. Total cost was 1,162,211 dollars and 32 cents. Councilman Wolf, you had asked me, how much did we spend in staff labor on that? I actually had staff go back and pull the time cards, full costs including benefits, taxes, everything, 100, excuse me.
Numbers that big, huh? Boy, y'all.
Sorry about that. It's allergy season. I'm taking allergy pills. Man, does it dry you out. And you start talking, it gets worse. It was 117,762 dollars and 17 cents. Question was asked, is it a good deal for the city? I believe it is. I, I know for a fact that we saved a lot of money by acting as the general contractor. We took care of an island within city property. We created a better link between Black Bay and the Centennial Trail. It also brings the two properties that city owns and functions them together, the senior center and, and that. One of the things we, we did is we asked the architect who gave us the designs to go in and value add that. They came back in with a value add, adding of it of, it was a 1.5 and for it. But we had to take a few things out because they added furnishings and some of that. So we removed that. When we added back in what we did on the backside of the building, all said and done, we saved over $800,000 as opposed to just going out and contracting it. But I think the biggest thing for us, as we look at it, we have a space that's taking care of the deficiencies that we've had with the treehouse. It has also opened up the trailhead for what it was designed for, for rentals and weddings and anniversary parties and that type of thing. So that was a good deal. I can tell you that staff is very proud of what they accomplished. They took a lot, a lot of pride in it. The benches you see there, we wanted an old train station look. We couldn't find them to buy. They built those by hand. There's a lot of extra touches that were done in there. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Dave, I thought it turned out very nice. Get used to the property, provides two big classrooms, as you say, with viewing space so people do not have to intrude upon the classes if they need to get to a restroom. One of the questions I asked Dave when we were touring the property is security and cameras on the north side, out by the field, right along Centennial Trail, is that, could that be an issue? And so I had asked Dave where we were on potential security cameras out there.
And Robbie's working on getting some lined up for it. And we do have Wi-Fi in there now. We've got a direct beam going to our park facility that is working, so security cameras security cameras will be easier, too.
I just thought it's important to have security after spending that much money on a nice facility now.
Dave, I got a question. Now, will this facility be used for strictly city programs? Will there be opportunities for outside groups to rent it for additional income to the city?
Yeah. When we've, when we get into fully using it, we are, we've done a soft opening. We had a great plan for wonderful ribbon cutting, celebration, something kind of got in the way of that. But we're running small classes in there right now. We would like to have a year of operation under our belts before we open it up to rentals. So ultimately, yes. We're gonna, a lot of the rentals we get are meeting spaces, and we're gonna try and push those over towards the treehouse. And the treehouse will remain for like guitar class and some of the painting classes and some of the messier things.
Okay, thank you. Linda?
I just would like to say that I am very impressed with all of the ideas that staff had in there to make it look like, like the little train in the back, and just so many very unique things. I think you guys worked really hard on it, and I would like to congratulate you and your staff on it. I think it's, I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I guess I feel the other way. You mentioned that you spent almost $118,000 in staff. Is that included in the 1.1 million price tag?
No, it was not, because I had made that before. So I went back and added that.
I guess my biggest concern is when we, when you brought this to us, you said this is gonna cost us $475,000, rough number. And it ended up costing us almost 1.3 million. That's a big miss.
How much of that was the parking lot and that, though, that we weren't aware of?
Well, I mean, I know what, we weren't aware of it, but it's still, when you come to the council and say, "Hey, we want to build, buy this building and fix it up," and we asked, "How much is this gonna cost?" And you say $465,000. I mean, that's the estimate. If you, if there's all this stuff in there, it kind of leans to say, I guess, let me back up. We made a decision to do this, but I don't want to make this same kind of decision again. I think it, I think we missed it. I think if you had come to us back in the beginning and said, "I want to build a building with two rooms in it, and it's gonna cost us 1.3 million," we would have just said, "Forget it, Dave. No way." I, you know, when you said 465, it was like, okay, yeah, that's, you know, that's not bad. I don't know how we got from 465 to 1.3 million. I, I don't remember approving any additional funds to go into this thing.
We did miss it by 150,000. I understand what you're saying, but 550,000 of that came out of a separate impact fees. Those, every one of those bills came before you when we were doing the trains, when we came forward with the cushion turf. Those were set before council on, I mean, those were approved contracts. So, and that's part of that budget of impact fees. We moved a system forward because we saw an area for savings. The 150,000 that we saw an increase, we got in there and we found out that the sewer line had a dip in it. So to get it going through, it was taken care of. We found out that the parking lot had not been built to code. They just paved right over the ground. Those things had additional costs to them, an additional water line. We had to meet the codes with the department. When we came to you first, at the first time, that was the best guess that between us and planning and zoning of what would be required to go in there. We also found out that the electrical system, well, on the outside looked great, inside the walls, it didn't meet code anywhere. So those were contracted items. How do we, how do we prevent it in the future? Well, one of the things you guys did was you allowed us to hire a park planner. And Robbie's been absolutely instrumental in bringing these forward, getting it in line. Unfortunately, we're also finding that some of the costs are gonna be higher. A dog park, we just did our cost on that. For us to do a dog park, it's gonna be about 600,000. I think in impact fees, we had, years ago, had looked at it being about 150,000, most of that in parking lot. So we are, through having an architect onboard, I think your figures that we present to you will be better.
All right.
I would hope so. I mean, I'm serious. I, I'm disappointed that we missed it by that big a number. And I realize you ran into some stuff, but I guess as a sitting councilman, you know, we kind of missed a little bit on the treehouse. We've had issues with it as far as accessibility and stuff. I, I just, I'll tell you right now, next time somebody comes forward and says, "I want to buy an old building, fix it up," I'm gonna really question any of those estimates, because this is, this isn't just a little miss. This isn't $150,000. This is almost $800,000.
I'll take that responsibility. There's a number of reasons, but this isn't the venue for that.
Now, we've, we appreciate your comments. Appreciate your position. I think it's, it's well stated, and Dave understands. So, Steve?
You know what? I'm gonna stick up for Dave a little bit, because we made a decision to buy a council, as council to buy an older building. I've had lots of experiences with cities buying older buildings, and you don't know what you're getting into once you buy one. There's hidden costs that you don't see. And I think Dave used a lot of in-house staff. He presented everything to us. And if you're going to remodel an old building and you want the public to use it, you have to make it nice. It has to be, people expect first-class public facilities now. And if, I think they did a first-class job on it. And I see a lot of use to it. And I see a facility that'll be used at least for the next 50 years by the citizens of Post Falls. So kind of when we make a decision to buy an old building and tell somebody, "Make it nice for the public to use," there's gonna be hidden costs. It's inevitable. And Dave, please, thank you and your staff for all the hard work they did on that.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Any other comments? Next item up is citizens' issue, and this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council on a non-agenda item. Anyone wishes to testify? Seeing none. Mayor and council comments? Oh, sorry. Did you wish to testify before the?
Yeah.
Oh, that's time. Come on, please come forward and give your name for the record. And if you watch the timer down here, you'll have five minutes.
Lawrence Lucas. I'm at 11391 West Hayden Avenue. Question I have is, is about the, the planned school development, high school development out there. The, the idea is to keep that zone for PR use, and that's what it's set for. But the, the roads out there and the traffic increase, those sorts of things. My concern is that it's for PR use. It's supposed to keep open spaces. That's what everyone was talking about. But that's going to, I feel, be completely changed as soon as we have half of the city trying to come down on that central location every single day for nine months out of the year.
You're talking the school, the school site?
That's correct. Yes. The other, the other comment I have is when it comes to the, the building, I didn't know anything about that. But if there is an assumption that it's an old building, and you've had experience building old buildings and renovating them, as I have and my family has, you understand that you're gonna run into those things. You're going to run into problems. And so that needs to be accounted for before you approve any budgets. You're going to assume that you're going to have to renovate everything, not assume best-case scenario, that all of it was done right, or that all of it isn't in a state of disrepair. That's all.
Good. Thank you very much. Under council comments, there's been so many emails and so much press on the virus, I'm sure it doesn't spread you, on masks, et cetera, et cetera. Two weeks ago at the meeting, I encouraged everybody to wear masks when in public, to adhere to social distancing, to take proper precautions as far as washing of hands, et cetera. When we started this, Mayor's Whitmer and myself, with the consent of our councils, issued an order to shut down businesses for a two-week period. Two and a half days later, the government stepped in, the governor stepped in and issued that statewide. It had a huge financial impact on the businesses that were affected. At that time, we had very few cases, no hospitalizations. And I've heard from so many people that are telling me the virus is not a serious issue because of that. Very few cases, no hospitalizations. Folks, things have changed. We received an information, email from the Cootney Health. The ICU unit at Cootney Health is at capacity. What does that mean? One of us, one of your spouses, one of your parents, one of your children have a medical emergency or an accident, and you need to be housed in the ICU unit? It's not gonna be at Cootney Health. So the thought is, that's all right. We'll just take them to Spokane. The press release, or the statement issued by Cootney Health said that the hospitals in Spokane have a maximum of two beds available per hospital in their ICU. They're at capacity as well. So things have changed. Our cases are growing at an exponential rate. Hospitalizations are growing. One of the issues that Cootney Health has is if it's an elderly patient who has been treated and is ready to be released back to an assisted living facility, the assisted living facilities are not taking them back. So Cootney Health is not allowed then to release that patient until they have, unless they have a place to go. My point in all this is I've come out as strongly recommending the use of face masks. I've said it in the paper. I'll say it right now. I have no intention of issuing a mandatory face mask policy in the city of Post Falls, because I don't think it will work. It's gotta be county-wide. It's gotta be a statewide mandate if that were to occur. And I think there's gonna be just as many people that will come out and intentionally flaunt not wearing a mask to prove a point. So I don't know how effective it would be. So while I strongly encourage people to wear face masks, now I'm asking people to wear face masks. I think it's important that we take steps to protect ourselves and our neighbors, regardless of whether they think face masks are important or not, to help us get through this. And I've listened to a lot of people that have become medical experts by reading the internet and reading emails. I've got friends, I've got family who are physicians, and when they are wearing face masks because it works, I'm gonna go with the medical experts, folks. I'm gonna rely on Panhandle Health. I'm gonna rely on Cootney Health to tell me what the facts are. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna listen to and/or believe the cut-and-pace emails that we are receiving by the dozens, if you will. So now I'm asking people to take that into consideration. The last thing I want to do is see people die from the virus. I, also the last thing, the second the last thing I want to see is businesses closed because of the virus. I do not want the state to move backwards in the governor's phases of handling this virus. And I'm afraid if we continue to see the numbers grow as they have, and if we continue to see the hospital at capacity, we're gonna have this very, very serious problem. So again, I've encouraged, and now I'm asking people, if you're in public, please adhere to social distancing, please wear face masks. People say it violates my civil rights. No, it doesn't. You can wear a face mask and worship as you choose. You can wear a face mask and own, own a weapon. So I'm asking you to wear face masks to, to recognize the importance of protecting yourselves and each other, because this is a terrible situation we're in, and the information, the numbers released by Cootney Health are, are proving that. So that's my spiel for the night. I just ask everybody to please pay attention. You don't have to agree with me. You don't have to agree with everybody else. But we've got to do something to help us get through this, this situation. Council comments?
I'd like to thank the council and the staff for, I think we made two big moves for the public. So I've heard loud and clear for years, preserve part of the prairie. And I think the foresight by our staff and this council to set aside that acre each where it'll always remain prairie is just a huge step that future generations will, will really enjoy. And the other part is the community forest and the trails. I think those recreational opportunities will go on forever. And thank you, council members and, and staff for doing that, for preserve the future for our kids.
Linda?
I would just like to thank John Manley and Justin Miller, everyone at the planning and building departments. I've had a personal house-building project going on for many, many months, and not only for me, but for many other people in that neighborhood that I've been driving by several times a week. I see these guys out there and just going out of their way for everyone, and just doing a really good job in a very, very busy residential real estate market. So they do a really good job, and I would just like to personally thank you guys for that. And they do wear masks out there, by the way, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Carrie?
I don't know if people can see on TV, and we're on Facebook also. I don't know if people can see, because I saw photographs that you couldn't tell that we have these on. They, they are kind of invisible. But so we have Plexiglas. Last, our last meeting was our first in-person meeting. And probably can't see down here between Shannon and Warren and Shelley is also Plexiglas. So I appreciate that the city, we've been doing our part, and you're doing a lot of other things internally for the safety of the staff, the city staff, as well as the public that is coming in to deal and, and deal with the city and all the spacing out there. And I appreciate the mayor's comments in the paper this morning about where he stood on the masks and all of that. And I have to say, I have lived here not all of my life, like Linda, but I have lived the majority of my long years in Cootney County. And I think our communities are just the absolutely most generous and kind communities that I have ever been. But it is, it's been heartbreaking to me to see the divisiveness and just the mean-spiritedness. It really does. It just hurts my heart. And I, I believe that the mandating of masks will actually enhance that. And what I believe, I have faith in our citizens, my neighbors, your neighbors. I have faith that we can and will do the right thing for ourselves, for each other, for our families, for our business, and for our community. So I think we've got a shot at doing the right thing without a mandate. So be safe. Do the right thing. Love one another. Be kind. Step away from the keyboards.
I was gonna send Chief Knight an email this morning, but I don't know if I can do that or not. We're getting close. But I was riding to work this morning at quarter after seven, and there was a Post Falls patrol officer in front of me, and pulled over. There's a mom and her a couple of kids, and one of them was riding a bike. And he hops out, and the kid was probably four years old and had a bike helmet, was giving him a coupon for a free scoop of ice cream, I believe. So to see smiles at 7:15 this morning, I think the work that you and the department does to build those relationships with the community, even, even the smallest of us are commendable, as always. And so I just wanted to say, I, I saw it for myself this morning, and, and tell you guys to keep up the good work. It was really cool to see.
Ice cream at 7 o'clock in the morning is a good thing, too.
Yeah. Today would have been all right.
Any other comments? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We're not.
The next motion is?
Adhere.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all for this conference. You're very good. My neighbor goes, if he asks me to wear-